Doubt, though, if if there is ever development on that green space or is that kind of green space in perpetuity there? That's one thing, and it is kind of behind the the tower there as well. Uh, the other thought I had was the other wall that is in the parking lot, not, you know, where the farmer's market meets. That would be a sizable wall. I mean, it's not city, it's not a city wall, but it's it's gonna be there for a pretty long time, I think, so.
For the visibility point, um, it's been outlined in the Northside Drive Small Area Plan that was reviewed reviewed by both the the DDA, Main Street, and then, of course, that came to council as well. That keeping that, or at least part of all of that parcel is green space long term, is a goal that's been identified. So while parts of Northside Drive area could develop, I know it's been a priority of mayor and council and our local, um, downtown boards to maintain some element of green space there. And while I did not include a picture of it, um, here, this is more of a close up visual, but when you're sitting at that stoplight off of Swift Street, you can see this wall perfectly. Um, but I understand that varying concern of visibility. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sir, uh, Councilman Peterson, which, uh, what wall did you reference?
This is the wall that would border on, I think, what is the bakery?
Uh, southern, simply Southern Suites.
You were facing the, the, um, what is it, the Play Center there, the Perry Players?
It's like you're entering into the parking lot.
This is huge walls, the full length of the.
Okay, I'm, I'm tracking.
We, we considered, I had it our board, we kind of all went out and took a look at varying properties that we could consider. But ultimately, with a city-owned facility, we thought that would be the best for long term. And that's why that recommendation was made this evening.
Mrs. Smith, does administration have a recommendation on this?
Uh, yes, Mayor, a few comments. Uh, you know, unfortunately, the deal with Perry Players did not work out. Um, it seemed that there was general support from all of you, uh, on that and having the mural on that wall. Um, and I feel to a certain extent, what's being recommended to you all this evening, um, is not as well thought out as I would like for it to be. Uh, the first is, and Ms. Hartley and a number of you alluded to it, on the private wall, uh, not having ownership of the property, um, and not being able to guarantee the ongoing maintenance associated with the mural is an issue. Um, I don't think moving forward, administration would ever recommend, uh, partnering again with a private entity in a private building for a publicly funded mural project. Uh, it's just been too much of an issue with liability and the proper documentation and all that stuff. Uh, the second thing was the, um, Perry Event Center wall. And I know Ms. Hartley said it's not obscured, uh, but I went and looked at it and you really can't see that whole wall, you know, as you see the photo here. Um, maybe if you're at like a certain angle, you might be able to see the whole thing, but it's, it's an obscure view. And that building, um, that's right there, that used to house the ammo and all that stuff for the armory, and then the water tower, those aren't going anywhere anytime soon. Uh, so we come in there, we put a mural into place or whatever, it's, you know, it's gonna be kind of hidden back there, and that kind of isn't the best, you know, picture we want to paint for the city and the decisions that you all make. Um, and the second is, uh, that property there, it is going to be mitigated soon. You know, we're looking at hopefully getting construction started there. I know you're all wondering what's going on with that project, uh, but sometime this winter, uh, you know, going in there, removing all the soil, coming back in with clean soil, and you all, as a body, have not determined what you want to do with that property long term. Um, there have been discussions, there have been some conceptual ideas put together. Um, but insofar as what is going to be on that property moving forward has yet to be determined, so I'd hate to go in there and, again, make an investment um, that may be, um, obscured or rendered basically null moving forward. Uh, so, you know, unfortunately, at this time, with the recommendations that are coming to you, um, administration would have to recommend de-obligating the funds back to Flint Energies. Um, and then the Main Street Advisory Board, Placemaking Committee going back, um, rethinking this, this sort of process moving forward, um, and possibly coming to you all at a future date with a project.
You know, this, um, there's a lar- a large amount of discussion around what's going to happen there. And we have a developer that's developing in there, and I think that we should allow those people to help decide what goes in here. They're gonna be investing a a great deal of money, uh, in development in and around there. We've got drawings for the loft apartments across the street that will be thirty-six additional lofts. We're looking at development over on Meeting Street and all, so I think as, as Robert said, I think it's premature before we do this on this wall right now.
Yes, sir. How long will that area be used for, um, the fall film series and just a green space?
The fall film series is over with.
For this year?
Well, I don't think we're, it's gonna be part of our plan going forward.
Because it would get visibility during the, you know, during the showings, but.
Do we, do we have any options for where we could put it in the future? I mean, I would, after the previous discussions on this matter, I would hate to see us not do it or just, you know. Uh, so I'd, I'd love to see some more options going forward.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that you mean on a government building. Um, I have to concur with Mr. Smith, um, as far as, uh, um, not pursuing a, a collaboration with a, a private, privately owned property. But I would like to see, I would like to see this come to fruition. Um, I, I hadn't given it as much thought as Mr. Smith, or I, I didn't really, I don't really pay much attention to that wall when I'm sitting at that red light. So, um, but I would like to see this, uh, eventually, um, happen.
How long do you have to decide what to use? You said money, or we have to give it back?
The deadline for the grant is November thirtieth. Um, we've been keeping open communication with Marion Macklemore with Flint Energies and keeping her updated on the status of our project, and she's always been, thank you for being so transparent, let us know where you are with the status. Um, so we've never had any inclination that November thirtieth was gonna be a hard deadline, but if administration's recommendation is to return the monies as a location is not viable at this time, then that's what will be done.
Can we pursue this grant again in the future?
I have asked Flint Energies the outlook and the opportunity um, for applying for the grant in the future, and she said, unfortunately, if you don't use the grant, it's not gonna look favorable for another grant application.
Could we get some more options by November thirtieth? Worth asking.
I could continue to bring you walls until the cows come home, um, to make this project work. I know it's been a very desirable project from our placemaking committee, and then, of course, the Main Street Advisory Board, who is gonna be putting up the funds to match the grant funding. Um, and then as well as maintain the mural moving forward. So, I mean, you have the full support of the Main Street Advisory Board, so I'm happy to continue to bring other options. Um, but I would defer to administration and council on next steps on that.
I'd like to see more options. Although, as, as Councilmember Peterson pointed out, the, the options are kind of limited when you're talking about city property, but, you know.
There's another, there's another side of the event center that I also looked at, it's not as large. This project and the sketch would have to be, like, limited down, um, but it's, like, if you're sitting in the parking lot on the left-hand side by one of the, the Northside Drive doors. But like I said, it was not as large, so that's why it wasn't in this update to begin with.
The, the wall facing Northside Drive?
No, sir, it's the wall that's facing the parking lot, so it's facing Meeting Street.
Meeting Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But it is substantially smaller in comparison to the wall that I've proposed here.
I have one question is that. I know it's kind of, like I said, late in the day, but, uh, you consider a location that, with the city own, and I don't know how everybody else feel about it, but can we build a wall that, to the point that it would be visible for people who coming in the city, or that's our intention, or we just wanna keep it for people in the city? I think as another city that you say, we see the wall, most people can see the wall, you know, coming into the city. So that's something, and I know with time, that's a short period of time, you know what I mean, and so it's something just, I'm throwing at you.
Yeah.
You know, we, if we find a good location, then we just might have to build a block wall, you know what I mean? And then we can decorate it the way that we would like to have it.
I would say this project is for both citizens and visitors. It's not geared just to the residents or just to the people that visit Perry, but it'd be for both, to your point. Yes, sir.
So what's, what is the preference of the council?
Well, since we have heard from our assistant manager and, and the, uh, option that he had brought forth, and and I feel that it's not feasible for us to go forward, and we don't have a, a good location to put the wall, so I make a motion that at this point, we just have to.
We really can't vote on anything, I just need, you know.
Okay.
But, but your recommendation is that you follow it, administration's guidelines and return the funding at this point in time.
That's right.
Yeah. Put the project on hold until a suitable place might be found, and then we'll see if they'll give it, give the money back again.
We can always try to apply. I'll, I'll continue to apply for grants until they get back on board with us.
Can, can you bring us, uh, some options for our next meeting this month?
Mm-hmm, for your next October meeting?
That's what I'd like to see.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see that as well.
Okay. Of course, and if y'all see anything, extra eyes always help, feel free to give me a call.
And Dr. Albert, you have an opinion?
I, I really don't.
So, we'll look for options over the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, is that what I understand the council is asking for?
That's my understanding, that you'll have some more, uh, additional options to consider at the next round of meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item four B is the Office of the City Attorney. Four B one is a rate study presentation. Ms. Newby?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mayor and Council, tonight I wanted to introduce the rate study and specifically, um, just remind council, you know, that we engaged the services of Raftellus, um, who's a national consultant, um, to determine the revenue and financial sufficiency of our water and sewer rates. And one of your most important things that you tasked us with was to ensure that new growth and new customers paid their fair share of financing the systems. And so, tonight, the presentation that you're going to see, um, is a guiding framework, it's a plan, it's a lot of data, but not nearly all the data that Diane and Rob and Mr. Worthington have put into reviewing our systems. Um, but I just wanted to point out a few points about just remembering that what we're getting here is a plan for the city to look at using now, and then to also look at that can evolve over the next five years. Um, another key point that I wanted you to note going into this is that you're not being asked to approve anything tonight. There's no action of council. Um, this is just a study and a presentation of the data to you. Um, earlier today, when I had just gotten out of the meeting, I had an email from Mr. Peterson asking for the study. And right before this meeting, I was able to email you the detailed spreadsheet that is the model. Um, so the model was finalized at the end of September, and the study would consist of this very detailed model, the presentation that you're about to see that summarizes this data, and then they'll produce a final written report, um, of the same information. But since the model was finished, we wanted to go ahead and get this information to you as soon as possible, and so that's what you're going to be seeing tonight is all of that information. Um, to tell you, just to remind you who Raftellus is, um, they help local governments and utilities improve their financial foundation while minimizing the impact on people that rely on their services. Specifically, they've been in the business for thirty-two years, serving the public sector. Their team includes over a hundred and ninety consultants. Um, they have provided assistance for over seventeen hundred public agencies and utilities that serve more than twenty-five percent of the US population, including the agencies that serve forty-one of the nation's fifty largest cities. So in the past year alone, Raftellus has worked on over thirteen hundred projects for seven hundred agencies in forty-seven states. So when you're going through this type of analysis and this type of study, this is who you want to have on your side. So that we can ensure that our systems are accurate, um, that it's the best data and information available to you to make the decisions that you need to make going forward. Um, specifically tonight, I would like to introduce, um, Rob Ori and Diane Holloway. Um, Rob has performed utility sufficiency and cost of service studies for over a hundred and seventy-five local governments. Um, and Diane has actually, over thirty years of, um, local government work, and has also been a finance director in the past before she transitioned into the consulting side of it. Um, so I would like to turn this over now to Rob and Diane.
Thank you very much.
Before he starts, I, I would make a recommendation to the council that we hold our questions to the end, because this is a very in-depth presentation, so many of the questions that you may have starting off will be answered before we get to the end, so I would recommend you write the questions down, because Rob's gonna be here to, to answer those questions, and we'll, they'll cover those, if that's okay with you guys.
Great. I'm a mayor, members of council, good evening again. For the record, my name's Robert Ori, I'm a senior principal with Raftellus. Um, that's, I didn't realize we had that many rate studies. But I've been doing this for probably over forty-five years. Now, I had my own company before Raftellus actually, actually bought us, so, um, so it's really a pleasure to be here. I'm also recognize Diane, who's been instrumental in putting the model together and working with y'all on a daily basis, so I want to recognize her and staff as well. It's been, it's been really, really good. For the next thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, we're gonna talk about the study purpose, uh, you know, what we're tasked to do, give you a little, a couple of factoids I want you to remember as we go through the study, because I'm gonna come back to them. Uh, then we'll talk about connection fees, then the revenue sufficiency analysis. That would be more in lines of rates for monthly service. Uh, and then summary of observations, recommendations, and open up to your questions and comments.
Can I ask you to speak into the mic?
Yes, sir. I tend to not, I tend to walk back at the, so. As, as, as Brooke said, the primary objective is develop a, a, uh, a rate and analysis and implementation plan. It really is a plan. We did a five-year projection of your operations and maintenance expenses, your costs, saying what, what is our revenue requirement, our rate needs, and then looked at the rates to produce enough revenue to meet those needs. Um, the, the key is not only to fund your revenue requirements, but to develop a balanced plan for your capital improvement program. As you'll see later on, there's a lot of money that needs to be spent in the next five years on the system. Uh, it's, this is very typical in the industry. When we get there, you'll see it, it's, it's pretty amazing, the amount, the amount of work you wanted to, you want, you need to do. To kind of give you an idea on the, on these facts and statistics, you've got about a hundred and twelve million dollars of depreciable assets reported on your financial statements today. That's based on original costs when those assets were constructed. By way of example, I built this building in nineteen ninety for ten thousand dollars. That's what's in the hundred and twelve, not today's cost. Today's cost to replace that building may be one hundred thousand dollars. And that one hundred thousand links to renewals and replacements. So it's very interesting, but I want you to keep that in mind, a hundred and twelve million dollars, what your, your investment in, in the utility is, which is significant. You serve about fourteen thousand water accounts, eight thousand or so, uh, eight thousand, eight hundred sewer accounts. Your largest class is single-family residential. Uh, by far, the largest class. Um, and, and which is very typical, and the average customer with domestic, domestically indoor use and irrigation use, uses about seventy-five hundred gallons. If it's indoor use only, it's about thirty-seven hundred gallons. Another, uh, number I want you to try to remember is the amount of rate revenue being produced by the system today. As you see on your, on your monitors, the, the water plus irrigation is about six million dollars, and the wastewater system is also about six million dollars, so think of twelve million dollars. And the reason why I'm bringing that up, because we talk about changes or recovery of dollars, how does that relate to the twelve million? Because that's your rate revenue. So as we think about that, I want you to remember that number if you can. That does include the seven percent rate adjustment that occurred last August as well. Some of our, uh, guiding principles and business practices, uh, these are fairly I can't think of the word I wanted to say, but, uh, you know, but, you know, you've normally, you expect this, I mean, the rate should be sufficient to recover the cost of providing service. That's, that's obviously an obvious type of thing you should do, but you'd be amazed, you know, what is the cost of service? That's, becomes the question. And that's operations and maintenance expense, debt repayment, capital reinvestment on those, those assets, those depreciable assets, or in-service, major repairs, adequate reserves, and reserves, to me, is both operating and capital. Um, you know, growth should pay for, for itself through, through, uh, such that the existing rate payer does not finance growth of the system to the extent practical and possible. That relates to plant capacity and expansions, uh, cost of metering. And the key is, any dollars that come into the system from growth-related type fees charged in new development benefits the existing rate payer, because they're not funding those revenue requirements that are still there. Uh, so that's very, very important and, and a major issue, uh, in the industry today. Rates must be financially sustainable and a favorable credit rating. Currently, you have, uh, several, uh, loans out, type of loans outstanding. You got senior lien bonds, you had, were issued, I think, in two thousand sixteen, uh, which you adopted a bond ordinance for. Uh, there's certain provisions in that bond ordinance, uh, that provide for what's called a rate covenant. And a rate covenant is, after you pay your operations and maintenance expenses, what's left over has to cover your debt by so much. Think of it as your mortgage payment. You know, uh, you, you, you've got your income, you pay your utility bill, your food bill and all that, and what's left over, you gotta cover your mortgage by so much. Um, in this case, the, the senior, the bond ordinance is a hundred and ten percent is the minimum coverage. The GFA loans is a hundred and five percent, which I would say come after the payment of, of the senior lien. So you have to have a, a coverage, and so, and that's an insurance to assure you to make sure that the debt is being covered. So that's what this financial sustainability and favorable credit rating links to. You're currently a double A three with Moody's on your senior lien debt, on your senior, yeah, your senior lien debt and whatnot. That's a pretty good rating. We want to maintain that or improve that, because a, a strong favorable credit rating is a reflection on you. That you're operating the system in a very fiscal manner, in a very healthy manner, and we want to keep that. I've had some that have been triple B, barely, almost junk bond status, and you'd be amazed how hard it is to attract capital to your capital improvements. Um, and here, we, we, financially sustainable utility, I'm spending a lot of time on this, but the focus there is liquidity, cash, uh, debt coverage, what I just mentioned, and a balanced capital funding plan. That's what Moody's, on the financial evaluation, and, uh, that's what they look at. Um, so we wanted to make sure we develop a rate plan that minimizes financial risk, yet promotes sustainable rates and meets these objectives over time. So let's first talk about the connection fees. The, the, the connection fees represent contributions from new development, uh, which serve, again, as I mentioned earlier, to reduce the cost to existing rate payer, because you have a source of funds coming into that link to that, those expansion, uh, capital dollars. You really don't have any water or sewer connection fees at this point, which is the cost of capacity to serve, to allow a customer to connect to the system. You do have water meter installation fees, which is another connection-related type fee, a contribution fee that is in place. You adopted this fee back in August as well. Um, so that fee is in place. Um, we do know that the ser- the city's experienced and will continue to experience infrastructure, construction, uh, in, in the future. There's a lot of need, a lot of growth-related, uh, needs in, in the city right now, and we want to make sure that you, you, you link this growth and find the growth with the fees. There's also an immediate, with that growth, there's an immediate need to, uh, to expand wastewater capacity. At the, uh, the East Perry wastewater treatment facility, that's underway right now. Um, there, it's, it's a significant capital investment to the system, uh, which I'll talk about in a, in a second. And the other thing that's happening with capital and why these fees are important, is what's happening to the cost of capital right now? Cost to construct infrastructure. It's really, really going up. Ever since COVID, back in twenty twenty-one, I guess it is, twenty twenty? Whether it's supply chain issues, lack of labor markets, uh, whatever it may be, um, tariffs, who, who knows? The cost of construction has been significant, which is putting more emphasis on these fees. By way of example, back in twenty twenty, to, to build a wastewater plant, and I'm just going by experience, it may cost ten dollars a gallon to build wastewater capacity. What does that mean? You're building a two MGD plant, ten times two MGD, two million gallons a day, twenty million dollars. Today, you're talking thirty, forty dollars a gallon. Same plant. And so those utilities that are in the current expansion plans today, not five years ago, who built it then, rates, cost recovery, uh, issues are much, much different. And that's kind of where you are. You're building this plant, and, and, and this plant that you're building for, uh, another two and a half MGD is seventy-nine million dollars. It's a lot, but that's what it is. And so, to have, to expand the collectability of dollars through a connection fee is the right thing to do, in my opinion, and, and match that. So that's what this is all about. Um, the capital improvement program that we have, this is fiscal twenty-five, which is ended to thirty-six years, is a hundred and fourteen million dollars. It's a pretty big number. That's double the existing asset base you have on the books right now. And I, and, and you're saying, oh, gosh, that's too much capital. No, it's not. I've been seeing things triple the, the existing basis. What's ever been added? So it's a big number coming in the system. And so, we gotta be aware for that. I know we're talking a lot about this. But you can see on this, on the graph that you have, what your, 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 your projects are right now. It's primarily the sewer, it's the, it's the wastewater treatment plant expansion, uh, uh, high service pumps and, and whatnot, and forced mains. Um, but you can see the significant projects that are in the CIP right now. And this is about, oh, seventy, seventy-five percent of the total CIP, just so you're aware. It's not one hundred percent of everything. The box that you see on this, on this table, that is what's linked to the, the proposed sewer connection fee. Those are the projects that we recognize. Why we pick those? There are, the, the plants in their way being constructed, they've been financed, uh, GFA loans, et cetera. And, and, and so you, you know the cost of financing for those. They're allocable to, to new development as well, maybe not the whole, whole project, but the majority of, of, of these facilities are allocable to, to new growth. And so we, we, we looked at that, to recover the cost of financing, the principal cost in, in developing, excuse me, the, uh, the connect, the sewer connection fee. So, so as you can see on this slide, like I said, this is mentioned, debt financing for the, has been secured. The project cost is about seventy-four million dollars. Uh, for this cost at two and F MGD, that's about twenty-nine dollars a gallon. But that includes the plant, uh, pumping, et cetera, so that, that's the, that cost. And you've already invested through twenty twenty-five about thirty million dollars or so in this plant. It's underway, it's going, which is, is, is great. The pledge repayment of the debt being issued on this plant would be from, pledge being where the security for the payment of the debt, that would be from rate revenues uh, and connection fees and things of that nature, and that's, that's what we're, we're looking at. The in terms of the connection fee, uh, that we're recommending, there needs to be some uh, criteria policy set to this connection fee. First of all, if, if, if it's being developed and designed to recover the cost of financing, it needs to link to the cost of financing and be utilized to pay the cost of financing. So our recommendation would be, if you So our recommendation would be if you adopt the fee, which, that it would, it would be segregated in a, in a separate fund for transparency and so that anybody could see how much is on deposit. And it'd be utilized to either pay the current year debt service payment for the, associated with these loans, of these, yeah, these loans. Or two, if you accrued funds, then you could also buy down the, the debt early, which would be a benefit, a big benefit because you eliminate all the interest costs going forward if, if you buy down the debt early. That's your, that would be, you know, your, your policy and, and your, your decisions. But I think by, by doing that, and, and it would not be utilized for operations and maintenance of the system. That's not what this is for, and, and, or funding asset replacement. I don't think it's, it'd be good to, to recover dollars from, for the expansion of the plant and then replace a tank. It needs a link to what you're doing. And so, so I, I think that provides the most transparency, but that's, that's your call. That's our recommendation to do that. The sewer connection fee, based on the capital that's being constructed, as you can see on this chart, the fee per, and, and the level of service that's been adopted by the city per equivalent residential connection, which is a single-family household per, per say, the flow allocated to a single-family household, would be about eight thousand four hundred dollars. It would be the price that would be charged to each ERC or ERU connect, equivalent residential unit. In this case, I say connection, they're the same, connecting to the system, moving forward. It would be charged retroactively, it's a forward-looking fee. This fee would be paid at, at a time of building permit. So it's, it's as each new unit gets developed, then the fee will be charged. It wouldn't be, you, you wouldn't walk in and say, I need to buy two hundred of these fees. You know, it's when the building permit's issued that they pay. So it'd match demand and, and, and the receipt of dollars at the same time. That would be good. We also, there's no water connection fee recommended at this time. We, you know, talking with staff, we felt that this is a big step in, in the right direction. It's a, and it's a fairly big number. And so let's, let's, let's phase this in over time. I think you should have a water connection fee at some point in the future. However, if you look at the capital improvement plan, there's not a lot of expansion projects right now. There is a two-million-gallon water expansion facility planned, but it's out there several years. And if you think about what we're doing here, the, the financing's been secured, construction's started. There's a closer nexus between the fee and the cost you're incurring today. So we recommend, let's get the, in place, get the policy set how you want them, and then come back and do a, consider a water fee sometime in the future would be our recommendation. However, you still have the water meter installation fee. And that fee, the majority, it's a cost recovery type fee based on the cost of install a meter. Well, the cost, the, the cost of the meters, we've talked about that, those construction costs going up. They're going up. And so is the cost of labor to install those by your contractor. We would recommend that you look at this, the water meter fee every three years or so. But in the, in the off years that you're not looking at that fee, you may want to index it for inflation because it is material and, and labor is primarily what it is. And that at least keeps you whole until you true it up in two or three, four years, let's say. So that may be something you may want to do. We would, would recommend that. And we see that a lot, you know, some sort of CPI index attached to it. But back to the connection fees for, this would be, is a summary of the, the fees that we would recommend or recommend to you. Your first column you see on the left is a column called meter equivalent factors. What is that? That, those factors are based on information published by American Waterworks Association, AWWA, and their M-one manual, or sorry, their M-six manual regarding meters. And they're the instantaneous demands of these meter, meter sizes. An instantaneous demand is, is how much water can flow through that meter when you turn on full, full force. That says, that's the most water you could ever get. So a lot of state commissions, a lot of utilities use that relationship to price the, the, the demand relationships of the meter sizes among themselves. By way of example, a three-quarter inch meter will flow instantaneous demand thirty gallons per minute. That's the most you can get out of that meter, thirty gallons. Well, a one-inch meter is fifty gallons a minute, a minute. So you think fifty divided by thirty is one point six seven, and there's the factor right there. So they, they, they linked to that, so it was a basis for the capacity relationships. So we set the first rate, the, the connection fee at eight thousand four and thirty-five dollars. Then we ratio all the other rates per meter size based on these factors. Now you'll look at a twelve-inch meter and say, a million, two hundred thousand dollars, that's a really big number. Well, a twelve-inch meter is a really big meter. And if you think about who gets a twelve-inch meter? Major hospital, a water park, a brewery. I'm not, I, I don't mean a brewery like down the street. I'm talking about a beer manufacturer. You know, somebody, they're, they're going to be big water users. And hence, I, we have one in once, in one utility, they have a twelve-inch meter. It's Tropicana Juice. They manufacture orange juice. So you can imagine the water going through there in that case, they have a twelve-inch meter. Ninety-one percent of your meters are three-quarter inch. That's where the majority of your meters are. So when you think about connection fees, really I look at the, the three-quarter inch one. That's, that's, again, that's the, the, the equivalent rate, and that's the, that's the most probable rate at the same time. So it kind of gives you a feel what we would, we, we are recommending. So our, our observations and recommendations under this would be, you know, this is a one-time fee charged in new development. It's not charged to existing rate payer. It benefits the system, which benefits the existing rate payer, but it's not charged to the existing rate payer. The fee would be eight thousand four and thirty-five dollars per ERU. I call it ERC on here, same thing. It does based on the actual cost of finance, of financing the sewer program, as we mentioned earlier. And it's applied toward debt service payments and/or redemption of bonds. Be the, the primary use of these fees for the benefit then of the existing rate payer because they're not paying the debt then. With the meter installation charge, the eight thousand four thirty-five plus the meter installation charge plus the irrigation fee, that's about ten thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars of contributed capital coming in for each ER, ERU connecting to this, to the system, individually meter ERU connecting to the system. Also let you know, we've assumed that these fees would be considered in the development of the revenue sufficiency financial forecast. If, if, if the fees are, are not, were not utilized or put at some percentage of the eight thousand, that would have effect on my next presentation, and we can calculate what that could possibly be for you. But I wanted to mention that they, we, we have assumed that right now in this analysis. Should I keep on going? You want to ask questions? Is this a stopping point before I go to the others? Do you want to? Keep going?
Yes, that would be a good spot. So because you are talking specifically about connectivity fees and we're going to move into rates.
Yes, sir.
Next, so. Questions, council members, relative to the information that you have heard so far?
I may miss this, on this slide, thirteen, total upfront payment per typical SFR.
Single-family residential.
What's, what's your idea of typical?
Typical would be a, a three-bedroom, two-bath home. It's, it's.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't take into effect the, the number of houses in the development.
No, each house would be, would be.
Per house?
Per house, per house, I'm sorry, yeah.
That includes your sewer fee, connectivity fee, plus the cost of installing a meter.
Yes, sir.
Or two meters, basically, because of.
Two meters, right.
That's, that's the total cost.
That's correct.
Per house.
And what, what we're seeing, that's, the number's not little. It's, it's not little, I'm, I'm going to tell you it's not. However, that's why I wanted to talk about construction costs so much because the cost of new construction, you can't control that, and it's unbelievable. And I, I, I can't stress that much enough. The second thing I'm seeing all across the country, those utilities that are adopting fees based on current construction costs, you're twenty-nine dollars a gallon, for example. I'm seeing fees like this. I have some in the twelve-thousand-dollar range just for water, excuse me, just for sewer. And water, six, seven, eight thousand dollars, it's amazing. And I will tell you, if I stood up before you four years ago, I was talking to you about this, I never would have dreamt we'd be anywhere like this. I, it's amazing. But I, I understand your reaction and it's, it's, you know, and that's what we're seeing.
My thought on that is the builder will just pass that cost on to each individual seller of the house or whatever.
And the other thing I'm seeing too is a lot of the housing prices have some sort of fee like this already somewhat into the price anyway. If, you know, whoever has a, a fee that's being charged, whether it's an impact fee, a connection fee, whatever it may be, that's built in already for a lot of housing already. But yes, they will pass it on, you're absolutely right.
To follow up on that in, in factoring this in, because I, I've had Dr. Albritton's initial reaction as well. In your experience, do you see this stifling growth significantly in the long run?
Not at all.
Okay.
Okay, let me tell you, tell you something else. Let's say you didn't build the walkway sewer plant. You said, no, too expensive, twenty-nine dollars a gallon, too expensive, right? I'm the developer, I'd have to build something if I want to develop. And it's going to be at this price or maybe costly more expensive because they're building a small package plant, it's more inefficient. If I was to build septic tanks, you know, I've heard a lot of costs on septic tanks lately. And, and, you know, depends if it's groundwater or not, and I don't know your area in terms of that. But they're not inexpensive either. And the developer doesn't want, generally, my experience has been the developer doesn't want to construct this because, you know, you do a good job, you, you, you manage it, it's, it's, you should be cheaper. Your cost of capital's cheaper, there's no, you don't pay income taxes or property taxes on this. You should be cheaper. And, and your facilities generally are municipal facilities. Now, I, I call them developer facilities, concrete versus steel. Mine didn't last as long as yours does. So as you can tell, I'm a big believer of public ownership of these facilities. I think they're better in the long run.
And thank you for that. Relative to, to the, your recommendation for what we use the connection fee for? If I understood you correctly, you said we could use that, or your recommendation is to use that for debt service relative to some of the GIFA loans that we have taken out already that existing customers are paying?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Okay, so in your estimation, would then, if we do this, could we expect maybe, you know, a reduction in some of the fees that we currently charge? Or at the very least, relatively few or mitigated or none in terms of increases going forward on existing customers?
We're mitigating increases going forward on existing customers already, even though we have a fairly robust change in rates, we're going to talk about in a second.
Sure.
We've built that in because your, your observation is right on. That if, if I, and, but let me give you a way of example. If I've, we've got, say, four hundred single-family homes being added in the forecast, let's say. And at eight thousand dollars, four hundred times eighty-four hundred, I was round, please, that's three point three six million dollars every year of income coming in. If the average principal repayment on the GIFA loans and those other PPFA loans that you have for this, this, this project, let's say that's two million dollars. Well, I've got one point, one million dollars sitting here. And, and that, that's how we approached it. We took the average, we only applied to those, those loans, the average and the principal. But if I got four or five years, then you have a decision. Do you redeem debt, take off the five million and reduce interest for the next twenty years? Or what do you do? But, and the other thing I think we need to do is we need to track going forward. This is a little, this is going to be a little complicated. What has been the existing rate payer contribution? Let me give you another example, it's easier to talk with numbers. I just used four hundred units of growth. Let's take the worst-case scenario you could ever have, zero. Did the debt go away? No, didn't go away. So I've got this expansion-related debt sitting there. We, we, we think, we got no money in, right? Well, to me, you're going to get, you're going to get this, these units sooner or later, that they owe the existing rate payer the money that didn't come in. And so I think we should track that at some point because there's timing differences here. When does growth occur versus when do you construct? It's always an issue in utilities, all the time. And so my, my initial thought, and this is really confusing, but track what the, the return back to the existing, the system is, that's the rate payer, the system itself or the benefit. And, and by the end, if you've got, you know, what, how was, was it one point six MGD of growth? Sixty-eight percent. Hold on a second. Hold on a second, I'm sorry. Sooner or later, you'll get the nine thousand ERCs times eight thousand, you'll get forty million dollars. You know, there's just timing on that, and that's a big benefit to the system. And so a, as you set your policy, we want to make sure we, I think you, how do you apply the funds? How do you, you financially report the funds? And then how do you utilize your funds is, is, is your decision. And we've given you our thoughts, but, and we can talk more about that later. That's not for tonight, but that's, you, you will need to address that, I think. Again, I'm sorry, sorry I'm being so detailed here, I apologize.
Other question, yes, sir.
I appreciate you saying that because I did the math on that. And in order to pay this off, we need close to nine thousand connections.
That's correct.
Now, I don't know how fast we grow at that level to, to do that. I did want to ask a question on page ten of your presentation.
Yes, sir.
It, it said that, when it, where it said the project cost was seventy, roughly seventy-four million, includes expenditures made in prior years. I don't know what those were for exactly, but it says spent approximately thirty, thirty-one million through twenty twenty-five. So is that thirty million out of the seventy-three million?
Yes, yes. You're, you're, you're borrowed, say through GIFA right now, and you're, you're spending the fifty million dollars.
This is basically the money we draw down to do the next phase.
That is absolutely correct. And the other thing on the, the GIFA loan, your, your payment for, for the loan is interest-only right now. There's no principal reduction, as you know. And, and so you, you got a nice match there when, if you adopt this fee and they start coming in, and you're paying the principal back, it's going to be five million, four million dollars. Are they getting crease in, in debt service, which we'll show you later? You'll, you'll want this additional revenue stream to help with that. Diane, you got a question?
If, if I may ask a related question to what you asked, Councilman Peterson, just, I think I've asked this before, but for clarification, in terms of timing that you brought up.
Yes, sir.
Relative to the connectivity fee, Mr. Smith, correct me if I'm wrong. This fee applies to when the house connects to our sewer system, not when the development was approved or, or whatnot.
That's correct, with a maybe a minor, maybe a slight adjustment to that. And correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's, it's not when the house connects. I believe it's be when the building permit is issued.
Is issued.
When the concurrency requirement occurs. I need to have the capacity because you're building a house now. Technically, your, your thought is, is kind of the same, a little bit more of a.
So any subdivision that's been approved, they will still have to pay the connect, the connection fee?
Only when the building.
When the building permit is issued.
Not when the development order is issued for the two hundred units.
Right.
It's A, B, C, D, E.
Right, so in the, so in, in, in terms of timing, you know, I just want to make the point the study wasn't purposely being delayed so that we could sneak in more and more subdivisions that wouldn't have to pay this, is that correct?
I think everybody's going to recognize how detailed this is, and it has been a very laborious exercise.
Sure.
But we wanted to get it out as, as soon as they finished it, and so I.
No, and I appreciate all the effort that has gone into it, for sure.
I was wondering if I could just, again.
Yes, sir.
I think it was Councilman Jones that previously said something about the impact of this on current rate players, payers. They're under the old system that was there, we're starting a whole new one now. So could, could you? So could you review, what do you anticipate the impact on them? Because I know that's of concern in our community of of either keeping rates at a current level or reducing ultimately as possible.
Comes in the next piece.
Yeah, I think that's the next discussion.
All right, thank you.
That we're gonna talk about. I I think I understand where you're going. If I don't answer your question as we're going, please ask it again. Okay, okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ori, on slide five, you mentioned under the first bullet, the one, two, three, the fourth sub-bullet, adequate reserves, operating capital related.
Yes, sir.
What is is a, what is adequate to you, to be?
Adequate for me?
Yes. Would you recommend?
Can I break it apart for you?
Yes.
Okay. First is operating reserves. I believe you should be at least a hundred and fifty days O and M. That's that's just operating reserves. That's Standard and Poor's and Fitch, rate agencies recognize that level of reserves as a a high credit, double A type credit, which is what you are. A double A three, but you are a double A credit. That is, would be used for everything but capital. It, you know, it seems like a lot, but if you think you have twelve million dollars of revenue right now, so a hundred and fifty days, let's call that half just to make it easy. So that'd be six million dollars. I would grow into that over time and then balance that. I've had some clients that've had severe weather events where they've lost revenues. More along the 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 coast, obviously. But these these events can be dramatic. And who never knows what happens, you know, it seems like if they get further, who ever thought, who is that, what's the place in 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 North Carolina that has the Billmore House? Which one? Asheville, yeah, thank you, thank you. Who would have thought that Asheville would have the the damage they had a year or so ago? So but that's viewed, I I see some people, lowest level of that would be ninety days of of revenue. On the capital side, that's a little bit more difficult. I'm a big believer in having one year of of your R and R expense or depreciation expense, whichever is more easily calculable. Each appreciation is obviously very easy, which is about three million dollars right now. I'm a big believer, because costs are going up, I I worry about this depreciation. I like the next year's R and R budget, which is a levelized expenditure, not a, not this type of expenditure, but what's your levelized deposit? I like to recommend having the next year's deposit on hand now, so your program can continue, and you have a year or so to to adjust if something happens. Because capital's harder, it is, it takes longer to develop it and implement it. And if there's a change, you don't want to stop your program, because capital provides the going concern concept for the for the system, it's in service and provides rate revenue. If you know, if you if you start having all these line breaks and 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 whatnot, you've got a problem. An old mentor of mine told me, you know, utilities are very forgiving, but when they start breaking, they start breaking. And we don't want to be when the start-breaking thing comes.
Including in that reserve, are you not also talking about our depreciation account?
Well, that would, that would be in lieu of.
We keep very healthy depreciation accounts on place and so.
Yeah, it's, they're, to be honest with you, they're kind of low.
The number I see is what the number you're talking about.
Okay, I, we didn't see, well, we, we're looking at it more as reserves, operating reserves than we are in capital. You've you've got a fairly good balance right now, but I really think it needs to be higher.
Yeah.
Be honest with you. Finally, on that, not to keep on delaying, talking about this, when I mentioned earlier on, oh, where was it? This is right here, the the top bullet, as you look up there, guiding principles. The credit rating agency, I mentioned your credit rating, double A three, but their focus is on liquidity, debt coverage, and the balanced capital plan. Your question was liquidity. That was your question right there. That's one of their major credit ratings. The stronger you are, you know, cash is king type of thing, the better rating you get and the better ability to track capital when you need it. I'm not saying have, you know, eight hundred days of revenue. I know utilities that do. That's not gonna work here. He is have the reserve, you think is prudent for for your, where you want to be, but that's where I would be.
Well, I can, I can understand your point of view. But I also answer to my constituents.
You do.
And and that that much reserve, you know, funding that much reserve just is is a pretty steep amount.
You have to answer, and I will tell you, I put my customer hat on. I don't want to raise rates just to have a hundred and fifty-day reserve if everything else is going well. That's why I look at both of them. Maybe ninety days is is better, because I have a very strong capital side. But I like separating them to show the public where these funds reside, because capital reserves can grow. Is that a bad thing? No, because capital spending is lumpy. Funding should be linear. You know, funding should be like that, because your spenders are like this. And and so, I mean, it it's like, well, that's, doesn't happen, duh. I will show you a chart that, what the CIP looks like here in a second. So but but your point i- is well, well-taken. I I don't disagree with you at all.
Also, on that same slide eight, BLS Construction Material Index. What is BLS?
Oh, sorry, I meant to tell you that. Bureau Labor Statistics.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions, counsel, before we move on to the rates side? Okay, thank you.
Did you do that? Sorry about that. It threw me off there for a second. Let me just, let me just get to you here. Hold on a second. And and thank you for your patience on this presentation. I know there was a lot of detail there, but but thank you very much. Revenue Sufficiency Analysis, I'd like to give you a little general overview about that. Key factors affecting rate recommendations, talk about our forecasts and 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 the the rate phasing plan that we we see right now, based on our assumptions. Talk about the the fiscal position, what will be the result from a financial standpoint with the with the rate plan? And talk about our observations and recommendations. This part of the study is the determination, I think it was your question, about what the rates should be based on the implementation of the connection charge and all your other assumptions, expansion of the plant, which will add incremental O and M expenses, all sorts of stuff. So we look at that too, your debt service. That's, this is the other half of the analysis. And probably the one that's very, very important to you, this is the one where the constituents ask you about rates, number one. And number two is, you know, ninety-five percent of your ongoing revenue comes from rates of your system. Yes, you have interesting come on up, but this is the major driver right here of revenue. And I just mentioned that ninety-five percent. The rate resolution adopted in in twenty twenty-two December talked about anticipation of a GFA loan for the East Perry wastewater treatment plant expansion. And it provided a couple of things, and I wanted to mention this real, real quick, because there's a, there's an inherent policy in here and an inherent rate adjustment that that happened. The first was the water sewer rate should be increased by seven percent for twenty-five and twenty-six. You just implemented seven percent for fiscal twenty-six, it, you know, a few months ago. So I think effective July first, I believe. That's happened. But the second one is more important to me is that for twenty-seven and thereafter, you will, you have your rate resolutions pretty stated that you will ensure all operating costs and debt service obligations are met. And met, to me, means funded. That's, that's what that means to me. And that's very, very important, because it also links to your rate covenant in your bond ordinance, says that after you pay your operations and maintenance expenses from revenue, that net amount must cover your debt service payment, debt, by at least a hundred and ten percent. The ten percent margin gives you contributions to your new and extension fund for capital reinvestment. So there's your kind of link right here. But it also said, as part of that first bullet, that rate increases range from six to ten percent, depending on these operating costs and customer growth, it's probable. Didn't tell you when it ends. It just said, it's there. I look at the first bullet, the first, that's almost like a a business policy you've adopted, and I, I think it's good. I think it's missing capital, but 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 you've kind of identified this. So I wanted to mention that. So what what is affecting rates? Probably, y'all have already heard about inflation. I don't think I spent a lot of time on this. And I can tell you that from twenty, fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-five, your O and M expenses, operating expenses, have increased by about twenty percent, about six point four percent annually. It's not a little number, it's pretty high. I will also tell you that I'm seeing this a lot of places. One of the biggest reasons is labor. To to keep people or attract labor, you gotta pay them. Where a good example of this is not the utility industry, but it's the solid waste industry. You may have seen this here. The cost of a driver four years ago for a garbage truck, ten dollars, fifteen dollars, maybe, an hour. Now they're twenty-five and thirty and forty dollars an hour, and people wonder why the cost of garbage went from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars? Besides a truck. Because they say, well, fuel prices aren't up. But that that, so the number didn't surprise me. Our forecast does assume a continuation of six percent, but for another reason. Besides the general O and M cost of inflation, we do have growth. You've got, which I'll show you in a second, you've got good growth that affects cost of O and M. But when you add on the the expansion of the East Perry plant, that's gonna add additional incremental O and M. There's always a stair step when you add a plant. Staffing, base load, energy, things of that nature, power to pump, move flows to this plant from the, I can't remember the, what the, because it's a South Perry plant thing. Moving flows, that, there will be a step up of cost. I see it every time. And so we built that in here too. Without that, that's, our forecast would be in the in the four percent range, which is much more consistent with your cost of inflation and cost of labor and cost of contract management. Which is, which is, you know, in the in the five percent range. But you can see on here, from twenty-one to twenty-five, kind of what some of these indexes have have ranged for the past four years or so. Again, BLS, Bureau Labor Statistics. Engineering news record that you see on here is a construction cost index they 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 talk about. And and so we looked at that as well. It's it's fairly low, and NACWA is NACWA. That's the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. They they look at rates and inflation every year. It's pretty amazing. What, if you compare those, how different rate increases are to inflation? Then be a lot higher than this. But it kind of gives you a feel, the NACWA index change. But the point is, the numbers are fairly big, and 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 so as inflation occurs, you've done fairly well absorbing this, but it does affect your net revenues. If you don't change rates, inflation hits O and M, rates stay static, the margin, which I call the operating margin, drops. And the operating margin is debt and and R and R. So that's an impact. System growth is a is a positive thing. We've got growth of over four percent in this, in the financial forecast, which is pretty robust for for other utilities I see. One of the ones we did, we're doing recently is Newton County Water and Sew Authority up up the ways from y'all. They're nowhere near four percent, but they're like in the one to one and a half percent. Now, Rivian, where they're gonna build a manufacturing plant up there, hasn't started yet in reality, but it it, you've got a good growth, but growth causes expansion, which, that's okay. It's the timing of when, where you are. If you've got the plant built and all this growth is filling it in, that, those marginal costs to serve that growth is pretty low. You know, but if I've got to build the plant that calls the growth occur, that's your most expensive timeframe, and you are there for the wastewater plant. That's not a bad thing. It's just, it's where you are. And so, but 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 once you get past that, you've got five, six, seven thousand ERCs of growth sitting there without a plant expansion, which is, as you can imagine, the revenue stream just just is 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 good. I wanted to mention, you know, water plant number three, expansion to MGD, that's beyond the forecast period. It's not in this analysis. We did talk about including that, but it's it's far out. But I wanted to mention that to you all, just to put that in the back of your mind, that there is a plant expansion for water out there. And that's why I mentioned the connection fees for water. At some point, as you're annually looking at this, don't forget that facility sitting there as it moves forward closer to you on the construction timeline. But it's not in the forecast right now. We have the East Perry wastewater plant. I've talked about that many times in the incremental costs to 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 operate and finance that facility. This is the 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 funding plan that we have in the analysis right now. You met, you heard me say a hundred and fourteen million dollars was the 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 capital plan we have for twenty-five through twenty-six. Twenty-five is now over, but when we started the study, it was there. A couple of things I want to mention. Historically, you were a very debt utilization type utility, if I can, those probably aren't quite the proper words, but you relied on debt, new debt, to find, fund your capital program. You have a lot of debt issues out there. And if you look at that table that you see there, eighty-four percent of your your program is debt-related. And I've been talking to you for thirty minutes now about balanced plans and whatnot. We're moving there, because the, if you look at the existing PPFA and existing GFA loans, those are the ones that were secured a year or so ago, two years ago. That's not, we're going out to the market today. They were, you've already got them. We're just finishing the project. But we do have two other issues, based on the the capital improvement plan, or if I say CIP, that's Capital Improvement Plan, that we have two other issues totaling about twenty-two million dollars in project funding. If those got delayed or something, that may change. Because if you look at the very first line, PEGO, thirteen million dollars. You're when you talked about the, Mayor, when you talked about the balance in the the capital, that's in the revenue fund, not in the renewal and extension fund, R and E fund. Pursuant to your bond resolution, you have to make no deposits to the R and E fund if you have seventy-five thousand dollars on deposit. Seventy-five thousand dollars won't even buy a pump. This, 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 this is a number that was adopted back in the nineties. And 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 to provide flexibility, I really think you should use your R and E fund or a separate capital account purely as a capital account mechanism, solely for capital, so you can present it, control it, you don't, if there's rate issues, you can talk why you have this money, how it's dedicated, and whatnot. If it's all built, if it's all blended to your reserves, you don't see it. And I have had customers and and developers and people say, it's like, Rob, we have a hundred million dollars of cash sitting here. We don't need to raise rates. Yeah, but ninety-five thousand, million of it was for that plant we're just getting ready to build. Or it's got bond proceeds we haven't spent yet. People don't see that. So I I'm saying this, because I think if if it, I I don't want to set rates just to get your, I think it was, I'm 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 not sure who I'm, who it was. I apologize. I pointed to the wrong guy. You, that's right, it was you. I don't want to set, sorry, I don't want to set rates simply to have the reserve. But if we have the reserve for the purpose, you want to tell them why, I think. And so that's why I'm I'm spending a lot of time on this. This is my my opinion that that should be. But you can see thirteen, fourteen million. That's a pretty big number. Because we're recommending you start funding a, some sort of dedicated fund or R and E from a dedicated program deposit to that fund, whether you spend any money or not. That you, because because the assets are depreciating every year. They're gonna come. And and again, expenditures are lumpy. I'll show you that. And this is one of the biggest this is one of the biggest issues facing the country and utilities is the amount of funds you set aside for renewal, capital reinvestment, renewals and replacements, whatever you want to call them. It it it's, it's, it's very tough, because, you know, you're accruing funds for displaced assets. And I mentioned the bond ordinance already at the seventy-five thousand dollars. Cause you know, you're accruing funds for the place assets. And I mentioned the bond ordinance already at the seventy-five thousand dollars. And, um, so I don't really need to talk about anymore. But normally, the, I think, uh, I think it was maybe I knew again, Mr. Moody, that about what's the reserve, a proper reserve. And I mentioned depreciation expense around the three million dollar range, again, just for capital. To replace the assets that's on the books today, I'm venturing to guess that could easily be two hundred and fifty million dollars, easy. When you think about the wastewater plant you're building right now, that's seventy-nine million, you know, twenty, twenty-nine dollars a gallon. Think of your old, the plants that are there now, if you replace them today, it's going to be, you know, somewhere around there, not as much. Cause you can replace everything. It's going to be high. And, and R and R, capital reinvestment should be looking at today's costs, not historical costs. And that's why the thing about depreciation I do not like because it's historical cost. However, I would tell you depreciation is a good reserve balance. Why? You've got bonding capability too. You can issue debt and you shouldn't do capital reinvestment for a hundred percent of your debt. Uh, your asset replacement, just like you shouldn't do debt for a hundred percent of your C I P. It should be balanced between the two equity and debt. And that produces long-term sustainable rates has been my, my observation. And that's what we're trying to do here is get you, our recommendation is get more of a pay as you go type financing, not everything. And, and limit the debt to major capital investment, a wastewater plant expansion. That is a perfect debt related project. Uh, replacing transmission lines, I don't know. We probably should think about that or meters. I've seen people issue debt to replace meters, like they have ten-year service lives. You go, why do you issue twenty-year debt for a ten-year service life? It doesn't make sense. Um, so that's what we're, 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 we're doing here. Again, I mentioned this before, I want to mention again, the, the credit rating agencies really, really view this favorably as a, a strong management comment for something like this. And the amount we're looking at, it's, it's phased in. We've got a room to, to move. We're about, you know, one to two percent of your depreciable assets is where we're looking. Your depreciation expense right now is in the three million range. You see, I don't even get there to the very end. This also provides debt service coverage, the funding of this, uh, just so you know. We put required deposit for your bond ordinance at zero because you're maintaining the seventy-five thousand dollar reserve. There's no requirement in your bond resolution to fund this. And, and I, I think we should fund something. Uh, if you said, Rob, could we adjust the three million dollars lower rates again? My answer would be yes. Where do you think you, you want to be from, from a facility standpoint? We picked the three million. We wanted to get the depreciation expense, uh, at some point, but it kind of gives you a feel. Percent of rate revenue and a percent of depreciable assets, we gave you both. So a lot of people look at, what's your deposit to R and R or R and E? As a percent of revenue. And if you look at the very last line, sixteen point four percent, sixteen cents every dollar would be going to an R and R fund to fund your, your, your capital, thinking of it that way. Uh, I've, I've, I've had a couple of engineers tell me the sweet spot is fifteen percent. I, I don't know if that's true or not, but, um, I want to point this out. This is what's in the plan right now, just so you're aware. Probably one of the biggest drivers, why we're doing this, oops, went the wrong way, is this right here. This is a summary of your debt service payments for the debt you have in, in effect today. The debt you secured through G F A and whatnot, and the proposed debt coming forward. Those two other bond issues I mentioned, they're looking to C I P. And if you look at, at, at this chart, um, I want to direct your attention first to twenty-twenty-five. Oh, there's your, your direct installment leases on here. I'm not going to talk, that's for, you know, trucks and stuff. I'm not going to talk much about that. But you know, if you look at the first year, you're around three million dollars is your debt service payment. The next year, and there's really, uh, I need to ask my personal question here. The proposed, yeah, they, it is, okay. If you look at this twenty-twenty-six, we've secured that. It's going up to five and a half million dollars. That's a, you know, two million dollar increase in debt service. Now think about the rate revenue I mentioned way back at the beginning of the point when it's, you've got twelve million dollars of, of revenue right now. Two divided by twelve, that's one-sixth. And that's what eighteen percent? You know, one-sixth is about eight, what eighteen percent, is that right? Six, maybe a little less than that, fifteen percent? Kind of give you a feel that we have this payment coming and it, it's going to require rate adjustment. And that's what you did to seven percent. And we talked later on, we're recommending you add to that. And this is the reason why, if you look at twenty-six. But if you continue on, it goes to about nine million dollars. And there is some new debt in there, but most of it is your existing secured debt or debt you've previously issued. Now you will have some step downs coming on twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty-five. Your existing two thousand and sixteen bonds drop off. Uh, that's a benefit and you have another small benefit later on. Um, I will tell you, we didn't try to do anything fancy on this. It's just level debt. You borrow fifty million. It's, you know, whatever the debts of us is. We could try to wrap debt around this. I don't think that's a good idea for right now for the revenue sufficiency. So you should look at it just plain vanilla. And then if you can get a favorable repayment schedule in the near term, then get the benefit from that. Uh, but I think right now level debt's where to go. But this is what you got to plan for, is, is this right here. And we have a lot of it. As you can see, I mean, and most of it's existing, so. We've talked rate phasings. I think you'll still have rate adjustments, maybe less than what I have. But this is something you'll need to look at every, every year to see where you are. I don't know if any of these loans are refundable per se. You could do something to them, possibly. Uh, I, I don't know the answer to that. I could try to look into that if you'd like me to do that, or we can get your financial advisor, if you have one, to, to look at them and ask them. But, um, this, this is a, a, a pretty, uh, big reason for rate adjustments is right here. So, in fact, if you look at this chart, this is the, this is the summary of the revenue requirements. Again, your, your funding needs, the salmon color is, uh, O and M, operation maintenance, excuse me. The, the, uh, I guess that'd be kind of orange is your debt service payments. And then the, the, uh, blue is a transfer to R and E account for pay as you go capital. That's one you can adjust. That, that's really your policy there. Uh, it gets fairly large at the end. But that's, but, but the difference in the black line and the dotted line would be rate adjustments, uh, based on the assumptions we have in here right now. They got to give you a feel. And those rate adjustments are, are right here. Uh, we're recommending three percent just to make sure we break even on, on, uh, the twenty-twenty-six rates equalling, uh, debt service plus O and M expense. And then we have, uh, uh, somewhat significant increase in twenty-seven, water and sewer. And on average, it's about twelve percent. And then we try to scale it down over time. Your big issue is, is wastewater. That's, that's, there's a lot of debt there. That's why those connection charges, though they're in there, in here, are so important. Um, cause your policy may be besides financing, maybe we can buy down the debt being issued for future needs as well. Again, I'll, uh, we, we can discuss that later. That's something you, you want to think about. But the wastewater side is, is where your, your, your water rates are really very attractive, to be honest with you. But those are the, those are the rate adjustments that we have built in the plan right now. In fact, to be honest with you, in the first two years, twenty-six, twenty-seven, if you want to make those payments to the R and R fund transfers, we'll be utilizing reserves to do that. And that's shown basically right here. If you, this is the first reserve, your O and M reserve. We kept the target of a hundred and fifty days in this example. And you can see we, we dipped down below that one fifty. Uh, we're not in, in, you know, in negative position per se. We're not zero. But, uh, it, to get back to a hundred and fifty days, those rate adjustments would need to be there. Now again, we don't have to be because you've got an R and E deposit. And there's a lot of stuff on this graph, so let me explain this to you. I, I, I left this in. This is one of my favorite graphs actually, but, um, but there's a lot of stuff on here. So let me tell you what you're looking at right here. The, 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 the orange color is your cash balance, projected cash balance. It's the same as the operating reserves. That would be your capital reserves. They're in addition to the operating reserves. They're not, the, the operating reserves are embedded in there. They're separate and distinct. Just so you're aware. So if you said you had three million of opera reserves and two million of, of capital reserves, you have five million dollars in cash. Okay? I want to make sure you understand that. So the, the blue bars is the deposits we're recommending from rates to get, and, and it would cap, it would, you know, pretty much hold still after twenty-thirty. But that's the end, the, the program deposit to that, uh, balance, uh, fund every year. That's the linear funding I was talking about earlier. The black line is the expenditures from the fund. That's thirteen, I mean, we saw the C I P, saw thirteen million dollars. That's the black line. And you can see it's pretty lumpy. And so when we have a higher spending, it drops. Then we start replenishing, it drops, we start replenishing again. Again, this, this is the thought on, on this, to do this. And I know it's a lot of stuff on this graph, but it's, it's spending, deposits and cash availability, just so you're aware. But our plan right now was to have the blue, and that's again, about two percent of depreciable assets in the last year. Just again, equal to, and it also equals depreciation expense. This is another graph I, I want to talk to you about. Um, this is, uh, that's all-in debt service coverage. First of all, what is all-in? You have multiple bond issues out there, G F A loans, senior lien loans, P P F A loans. They all have different requirements. By way of example, your senior lien bond has that one-ten coverage ratio. And it's set by bond resolution ordinance. That's, to me, it's senior. But you have the P P F A loans that are accounted for in the general fund that have no rate covenant on per se. They're in the general fund. They're secured by the general fund. So we add, we put our Moody's hat on and we add them all together, like, we're not worried about seniority here, payment. We're worried it's about debt. And so that's called all-in, all debt. And Moody's will, will, will look at this ratio when, if you ever have to get a credit rating, in my experience. If you look at this on an all-in basis, your tight years are twenty-six and twenty-seven. If you, you, you have, that, and that's the years that we have very low capital reinvestment going on. That's gives you coverage. However, you're, you're not in technical default or anything because you don't have a great covenant on your P P F A loans. If something happened, I imagine you could defer payment because they're in the general fund, right? So from a, a, a compliance issue, I don't see one. But from a, a, a funding issue, your next two years are, 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 are going to be, I, I think you're going to be really lean. And you really, really need to look at this very, very carefully as you look at next year and the following year. That's, that'd be, that we've, you know, would I want a higher rate increase? Sure. Can we do that? I don't want to recommend that. I want to, I put my customer hat on, even if it's the most high. So that's what we're, we're seeing now. We got a one-fifty, uh, target. And so we're robbed, but, but our, our senior lien bonds is one-ten. Coverage gives you payment, gives you the, uh, capital, uh, deposits to the R and E fund. That's, that's what that is. If you think about it, you have a dollar, fifty cents of that dollar goes O and M. Thirty cents pays debt. At twenty cents is capital reinvestment. That's your coverage. So you want a, a fairly high, high coverage. One-fifty, one-forty, one-seventy. I have some at two and three. That is really your, your, your bottom line deposit to pay, to pay as you go capital. That's how that links together. And so we said, you know, looking at talk, looking at Moody's and S and P, a one-fifty is a very reasonable target to be at. Uh, and that's where we placed it at right now. And if we adopted the plan as is, which I know will probably change, you get there. Which is really, really good. Of course, there's rate adjustments, but you do get there. So our recommendation obviously is to watch this very, very, very carefully. And in summary, you know, we've talked about increased operations. We talked about the, the capital. We talked about the debt service and that, that, the payment for debt service is going to go up four point nine million dollars in the next several years. And again, think about your, your revenue there, uh, where, where it is in twenty-six. And, uh, and we don't think the revenues are sufficient to, to, to fund this. You need to make adjustments. We would recommend, uh, you all firmly consider the connection fee charge for sewer. I know it's a high number. I think it's justifiable. I think it reflects market conditions today. And it will definitely help, uh, on the financial side of the, of, of the ledger. I would definitely recommend you adopt, uh, consider adopting some sort of intermediate adjustment to the twenty-twenty-six rates you just adopted. We have three percent. Personally, if you're not going to adopt a phased in approach of multiple years of rates, which I understand, you may want to consider something higher, five percent. Cause these are your lean years. Your, your, your most important rate adjustment's the first one, because it compounds, right? So, but we recommend at least three to do that. And, um, we do recommend, and you do this, so your budget process, everything. But annually review this, true it up. Keep in mind, you know, knowing what I've told you to, tonight. We, we, one thing I do know, it'll be different than what I told you. And hopefully it'll be pos, more positive what I'm saying. And I, I, we use a pretty conservative adjustments, but, um, but I would definitely look at this, knowing where we are right now. Your next two years, I think are your leanest. And then it gets better thereafter, thereafter. Oh, somehow that, okay. I, well, we should talk about this slide here real quick. I didn't realize it was in here. I mentioned the words NACWA earlier, National Association of Clean Water Agencies. And this is that chart. They produce this every year. I just find it very, very interesting and what utilities do. And, and this, this analysis is for a hundred and seventy utilities across the country. We, we don't participate in this. Uh, and serving over a hundred million people. So it gives you a, a barometer of what the country's doing, not just here. And the, the, well, it used to be Duke blue, but now it looks like a dark purple. The dark bars are the rate adjustments that these utilities have reported for all these years. And the Carolina blue bars is the CPI type index that they, they publish during that same year. And the reason why I, 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 I find this interesting is the cost of utility operations seems to grow at a much different pace than the CPI index. You know, we're heavy labor, heavy capital, power, chemicals, sludge disposal. The average household doesn't have, well, they have power, but they don't have anything else, you know, per se. And if you look at the, in the future, uh, these, these utilities were saying, you know, five to six, seven percent, let's say, rate adjustments next five years. They're projecting that, we're a little different, but it's interesting to see. That number used to be the twos and the threes, and now it's the fives and sixes. I'm talking two and threes like two years ago. And, uh, so it's just interesting. Uh, I didn't realize it was in here, but that's, that's what this chart is showing. It just shows what national trends are, are looking like a little bit. I thought you'd be finding it interesting. And, and now I'll, I'll throw it back over to questions and comments and, and give you all a breather.
There is a lot of information.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's wonderful. I'm, I'm glad it is this in depth.
I'm trying to tell you what I can.
Cause it really gives us a, a true look at where we are. Uh, questions, council members?
That was a lot of information. Thank you. And maybe this is not a discussion for tonight, but going forward, you know, when you say rate adjustments, really what you're saying is rate increases. Is that right?
That's correct. Revenue, revenue increase, yes.
Okay.
Well, you know, you've got some other options.
Right. Right, and I just, you know, what I want to see is explore, right, is all of those options as best we can, you know, so that the go-to isn't, well, let's just raise every year X number of percent. And when you are talking about these rate increases in adjusting for the sewer connection fee, are those increases only on the new customers, or is this everybody, including everybody?
For this section of the report.
For this section, right?
Yeah, right.
You know, I know, we get a lot of feedback from constituents, as Mr. Moody said, you know, who I think are frustrated with continual rate increases. And so I just, you know, again, it's not probably a discussion for tonight, but I just think that's, that needs to be put out there.
And I totally understand, agree with you. Some of those, you know, you have some options, I mentioned the water connection fee earlier, that would bring in revenue.
Sure.
I will tell you, your base charge on your rates is really low.
Right, yes.
Really low. We've been seeing this a lot in Virginia, they've been moving away from volumetric-only type rates, is kind of where you are. You know, you raise rates five percent, you only get three percent revenue because people conserve or adjust it, which they do. But a higher base charge provides more revenue stability for you, obviously, you're going to get the base charge every time. Does that solve the problem? No, but it may help stability on your system, that's another example of something. But that's not for tonight either.
Sure, sure.
But I just noticed there's some potential rate issue, in your commercial class, they pay the same base charge, you know, five dollars, that's five fifteen, I think it is. But if you're that twelve-inch meter and you're paying a five-dollar base charge, you know, I mean, you're a thousand ERUs.
Right.
You're paying the same as a household. So there may be some things there you can do, but again, that's for another.
Sure, and I understand we're not committing to that tonight.
No, you're.
No, you're not committing to anything, because I think that every year, this is just a plan for us to look at.
That's correct.
To give us an overview of where we are today.
Right.
There's all types of things that we will be looking at on every budget year.
Sure.
The base rate is a very good recommendation, especially on our commercial account.
Yes, sir.
Those type things we need to think about.
Yeah.
On an ongoing basis, and we will review this plan every year to determine what our cash needs and how do we need. We're not agreeing to anything tonight, other than, I hope in a couple of weeks you guys will agree to the connectivity charge, so we can start charging those on every house we permit going forward. So the sooner we can get eighty-five-hundred dollars coming in, that will really help our current rate payers, and so that's the only thing.
And it's on the wastewater side too, which is where you need the help.
Yes.
It's on the wastewater side.
Exactly.
Which is makes it the next.
Every time we issue a permit, this body has not approved that, then we lose that eighty-five-hundred dollars. And so I think that's, that's something that I would ask you guys to consider, that at our next, not our meeting tomorrow, because we don't do that, but two weeks from now, I would like to see that as a resolution for you guys to consider.
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to ask a question here. Really appreciate all this information, it's, my head almost hurts listening to all of it.
Sorry about that.
I would even like to say, it would be great, I mean, it's really, there's two big issues here. One is the connection fee, the other is what does it do to rates? Those are, in my mind, fairly separate, but fairly critical too. It'd be great if we could continue, at least on the rate thing, even a workshop going forward, rather than, you know, just individual conversations, because there's just so much here to discuss.
Right.
And ways to mitigate all this. And we talk about connection, we're talking about anywhere within our service area where we're, within our city then, any new building going up, that's eligible for a construction, okay? Or a connection fee. Other one is, I was noticing this on our, on our city budget, says costs for incomplete water sewer improvements, including debt service, are not charged to customers, the costs are paid from growth in the general fund, depreciation reserve, or splopped money. So that, and we've talked a lot about keeping up just with the debt service, not even touching the principal yet.
I'm not sure, can you read that again?
That was from the budget, so that could be old, so.
Well, this was the, for fiscal twenty-six.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the city manager put that out, so. The retired city manager.
And one thing we didn't assume, like sploß or something like that, we didn't assume any other contributions to the system. We said it's an enterprise fund, you know, rates, it should operate like a business, and rates and charges are generally, are used to recover those costs. I mean, we don't have any exact, and it's coming from the general fund to help solve them. I mean, that's an option too, but I didn't, we didn't assume anything like that in this analysis.
And see, I think that's another thing that we have in the workshop you're talking about, is we, we do have significant sploß funding that is committed to our continuing improvement of our system. So that'll have to be calculated in there as well.
And that would be definitely a financial benefit if it came to the utility side, obviously.
Exactly.
Yeah, agree.
Other question, yes, sir? That was a lot of information. Like council member Peterson, my head almost hurts from trying to take all of that in.
I know it's a lot, I.
But I appreciate you putting all this together, but for my, just, you know, this isn't directed to you, just to my fellow council members, and it's to echo what Mayor Walker said. You know, we're not deciding on anything tonight, but there is a lot of information here that we're going to have to discuss and hash out. One of the, one particular thing that caught my attention, that I just, I can't see happening, is slide number twenty-four. The, if my math, if my Perry High School math is right, between now and twenty-thirty, we're looking at a twenty-five-and-a-half percent rate in water system and a forty-nine percent rate in sewer. That's just, I can't agree with that at all.
I totally understand, and I can tell you, can I give you two other numbers? The first two, seventeen dollars a month, a lot. And then I think the next two, the six and six, which we were looking at, because it compounds around eleven, so I'm giving you a dollar value tied to your expenditure, percentage value, just you have that.
I appreciate that. And not only do I speak for, you know, my constituents, but I live in the city, obviously, and so I pay these rates as well. So, you know, just not only as a representative, but as a customer.
I totally understand.
Other questions or comments? Again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sorry for the detail, but it's good.
That's quite right, we needed it.
Okay.
And it gives us a real good look of where we are today, and I think a number of us knew where we were, but this really defines going forward, what we need to look at and how we need to think about.
And if you've got any other questions, just phone them through staff, and I'll try to answer any question you have, or any other thoughts that we didn't talk about. And I also want to give a shout-out real quick to the staff of the city, they are very helpful and very patient with us as we are moving forward. It was a pleasure working with them, so I appreciate that.
We are proud of our staff, and they are very professional, and they are top-notch. We think we have the best staff in the southeast.
I tell you, they're right up there, they're, it was great. Anyway, thank you, it was really good.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I have a request for a break, so we'll take, say, three minutes, you need longer than three minutes? We'll just take a three-minute break after that, I guess all of our brains are tired. Thank you, Mayor.
It's hard to swallow, isn't it?
All right, the break's over, so we'll get back to our work session. Item four C is the police department, four C one is request to modify the speed limits on two streets within the city of Perry. Chief?
Good day, Mayor, Council, I promise I don't have a twenty-one slides, so it'll be just a little bit quick.
Looking forward to it.
This is going to be short and sweet. I believe each of you should have received a memo about my request. As we all know, downtown is growing, and the traffic.
Can we start it back, please?
We know we're growing, growing in downtown with events and places like the Muse and restaurants, so we have an increase in foot traffic in downtown. Currently Commerce Street, also known as Georgia Seven, from the intersection of Ball, back to General Court and Hodges, has a speed limit of forty-five miles per hour. If you go on the east side of Ball Street, headed towards Macon Road, it's thirty miles an hour. That's a pretty significant difference in speed. With the planned extension of Jernigan Street, the continued growth of that area, the continued growth of pedestrian traffic, I would like to ask the Mayor and Council to submit a formal request to DOT for a study to reduce that speed limit to thirty miles an hour from its intersection. Currently, is it Macon Road to Ball Street, it is thirty, but continuing from Ball Street to General Court and Hodges, at the intersection, which is basically at WF Reagan. As we also know that the AG Hendricks Bridge is scheduled for repairs or replacement in the next, whenever. I thought it was already going to be started. So that will also help slow that traffic down as we approach that construction zone. So I'm asking Mayor and Council to make a presentation to DOT or request, rather than to reduce that speed to thirty. I think it's in the safety of the general public and the motors there. The second location is Elko Road behind the Ag Center. That is a city street from Layer Walker Parkway to South Perry Parkway. Currently, that speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour. South of South Perry Parkway is forty-five, north of Layer Walker is thirty-five. There are no businesses other than the. I'm. 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 I'm.
All right, the break's over, so we'll get back to our work session. Item four C is the Police Department. Four C one is request to modify the speed limits on two streets within the city of Perry. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Council, I promise I don't have a twenty-one slides, so it'll be just a little bit quicker.
Good.
No.
Looking forward to it.
This is gonna be short and sweet. Uh, I believe, uh, each of you should have received a, um, a memo about my request. Uh, as we all know, downtown is growing. And the traffic.
Can we, we're started back, please? Go ahead, chief.
All right, we, we know, uh, we're growing, growing in downtown, uh, with events and places like the Muse and restaurants. So we have an increase in foot traffic, uh, in downtown. Currently Commerce Street, also known as Georgia seven, from the intersection of Ball, back to General Courtney Hodges, uh, has a speed limit of forty-five miles per hour. If you go on the east side of Ball Street, headed towards Making Road, it's thirty miles an hour. That's a pretty significant difference in speed. Uh, with the planned extension of, of Jernigan Street, the continued growth of that, uh, area, the continued growth of, uh, pedestrian traffic, I would like to ask the Mayor and Council to submit a formal request to DOT for a study to reduce that speed limit to thirty miles an hour from its intersection. Currently, is it Making Road to Ball Street, it is thirty, but continuing from Ball Street to General Courtney Hodges at the intersection, which is basically at WF Reagan. Uh, as we also know that, uh, the A.G. Hendricks Bridge is scheduled for, uh, repairs or replacement in the next, whenever. Uh, I, I thought it was already gonna be started. Uh, so that will also help slow that traffic down as we, um, approach that construction zone. So I'm asking Mayor and Council, um, to make a presentation to DOT or request rather than to reduce that speed to thirty. I think it's in the safety, uh, of the general public and the motors there.
Okay.
The second location, uh, is Elko Road behind the Ag Center. That is a city street, uh, from Layer Walker Parkway to South Perry Parkway. Uh, currently, that speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour. Uh, south of, South Perry Parkway is forty-five, uh, north of, uh, Layer Walker is thirty-five. Uh, there are no businesses other than the dri- a driveway from the Ag Center and from the Lime Rock Road, uh, intersection there on, uh, Elko Road there. Um, we've done a speed study out there, the average speed's about forty-six to forty-seven miles an hour. Uh, we've talked to the Ag Center, uh, Director himself, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Shump. Uh, he has no objection to the increasing speed limit currently during the fair. They use that as an exit lane during certain nights with heavy traffic, but it is traffic controlled by an officer. Uh, we believe that's, uh, safe for the area and we believe it's, uh, makes sense for the traveling public through there.
Questions, council members?
Um, just a comment, um, I commend you, Chief Everidge, because I agree with, um, State Route seven. Um, it's too fast, I think. In fact, Courtney Hodges Boulevard, I think, shouldn't be forty-five, but that's another request for another day. I think that's too fast with all the, uh, even though there are, are cuts, um, along that stretch. I, I just think with all the, uh, uh, ingresses and egresses and businesses, I think forty-five's too fast along there from, from Big Indian out. But, uh, I, I don't see a problem at all with this, uh, request.
Well, I do believe if that area continues to grow and it, as it is with more office complexes and, and residential streets coming off of that, uh, I believe we may be back here one day for that request, but currently I don't believe there's enough justification that DOT would even consider it. Uh, I'm hoping they will consider this in the straight downtown corridor.
Other questions, comments? Do we have concurrence to move forward and ask GDOT to change these speed limits as recommended?
Yes.
Okay. You have concurrence to move forward and make your request?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh.
Mayor, one, one clarification on that, uh, the speed limit for the Elko Road would just require your approval and we can go ahead and make that change. That's my understanding. Is that correct, Chief?
Yeah, that is my understanding, that is a city street. So we, we control that and it's not a, a state route.
Does it require a formal vote then? She said yes. And so it has to come forward till tomorrow night, so it'll be carried forward. So separating this, you got concurrence on Commerce and we'll move Elko Road forward to tomorrow night as a for a formal vote.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have, uh, a question. Uh, once we make that change, uh, how many signs will we put up like that on each building and residence number?
Uh, it will be changed, it currently has a speed limit sign for thirty-five. We'll work, we'll probably work to get those signs addressed out to forty-five.
Okay. Item four D is the Human Resources Department. Four D one is the two thousand and twenty-six benefit package. I understand Mr. Williams is gonna present that to us this evening and welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you, council members, I'm glad to be here tonight. Um, I will try to, uh, be brief, but I'll try to, um, I'll definitely answer any questions you might have for me, um, and, and go over this. We have some good information tonight to go over with you all. We've been with Cigna for the past few years on our employee benefits, on our health insurance program. Um, and we really weren't looking to leave, but, um, Blue Cross just came in and offered us a deal we really couldn't, um, refuse. Um, Cigna was gonna come in at a five percent increase, which we're seeing eight to ten percent out there in the marketplace. Um, I represent the Georgia Bankers, um, Insurance Trust and all the banks in Georgia, and we just delivered a three and a half percent increase, um, out there. So I'm seeing a five percent, you know, with, with our claims looked, looked pretty fair. Um, but we wanted to, you know, test the market and, um, Blue Cross came in and really gave us some really great rates. Um, they made a couple of plan design changes, um, and it was going to keep the employees premium the same. It was gonna save the city, I mean, the, it was gonna save the city and employees quite a bit of money. Um, and we just thought it was a no-brainer. Um, the best thing about the plan is Blue Cross's network savings. Their discounts are the greatest in the state of Georgia. Now, the insurance companies don't like to talk about that, uh, but we see reports, um, in different places of what their net, um, deduction amounts are, and Blue Cross averages between fifty-nine and sixty-four percent across the state. Um, the closest second one is probably ten to twelve percent, um, beyond that. Um, so if, if you wouldn't mind, I would kinda like just to hit some of the highlights. I don't know, do we have the clicker or y'all just? Well, I just adjourned it, we, we don't need to do that. Okay, um, I know y'all had packets and if y'all want to, um, me just to hit the highlights and then y'all ask me any questions, I'll be glad to stop. Uh, I talked about the cost increase, um, with the medical plan and the pharmacy, something else to remember, um, a lot of pharmacies we're starting to see are having narrower networks, if you will. Uh, but Blue Cross's network is broad, we still have the private pharmacies, we still have the Krogers, we still have the, um, CVS, the Walgreens, the big box stores are still included, um, in part of the network, um, issues. So all the employees can go to any of the pharmacies they want to for their medications. Um, our, like I said, our network is very large, um, there's every hospital in the state of Georgia is part of Blue Cross's network. Um, and it is the most competitive network out there in the state. Our labs are gonna stay the same, so this, it's a win-win for the city and it's a win-win for the employees. Um, when we're talking about our voluntary products, the, the city provides short-term and long-term disability, um, and we offer dental, vision and life. We had been with, um, MetLife on that plan. Well, MetLife, we got our goodie out of MetLife because they came back and really popped us with their numbers. But I, we were able to go to the market like we do and shop it in Sun Life, which is an A-plus rated carrier, one of the best out there. They came in and were able to match our dental plan, match our benefits, plus our network. So our network is just as strong as it was, um, with MetLife. Also on our vision plan, we're using VSP. Um, and it says in your packet, that's a one-year rate guarantee, but actually it's gonna be a two-year rate guarantee. Um, on the dental plan, the dental plan was a y- one-year rate guarantee, but they promised to cap it at nine percent worst-case scenario. So when you're talking about a single rate of thirty-one dollars, nine percent increase, you know, it's gonna be less than three dollars, but I promise you, we're gonna fight them and make sure we hold their feet to the fire and keep it less than that if at all possible. Um, on our short-term disability, we were able to match where we were currently before MetLife's renewal, um, and that's a two-year rate guarantee. And also on our long-term disability, that's gonna be a two-year rate guarantee. Our life insurance that the city provides for all the employees is, um, one-time salary or up to a maximum of fifty thousand dollars. We kept that rate the same and those rates are gonna be the same for twenty-four months as well as the voluntary life. It's very important that we keep our life insurance and our disability together because of waiver or premium. If an employee were to go out on waiver of premium after short-term disability, then you don't have to fill out the paperwork for long-term disability if they, if they're out longer and/or worst-case scenario, if something were to happen to them and they would have that life, that life benefit. So that's something we always try to be cognizant of, is keeping our disability and our life together. And it was easy to keep it together again because we were able to keep our rates the same for another two years on that. Um, long-term disability, voluntary life, the voluntary life rates, we were able to match them and keep them the same for another twenty-four months. So those are the same. We're gonna talk to the employees, um, currently they have a cancer and an accident plan that's out there right now with Aflac. Sun Life provides the same thing and we're gonna see which one is the better one for them and we'll let them make that decision, um, during open enrollment. Questions, um, you know, we write, I've been writing, in, I've been in the business since nineteen ninety-four. Um, it's always competitive, we always go to the market, we always, um, see what's out there. Um, and this year, we definitely recommend moving our medical to Blue Cross and Blue Shield effective January one and moving all of our ancillary, um, services to Sun Life. Any questions?
Questions, council members?
What would be, uh, the waiting period if you have Aflac and, um, for cancer?
There would be, there would be a, a no-waiting period for, you know, if, if we were to move that. And we were definitely, when we're talking with the employees, if someone was going through something, you know, we would make sure they were protected, whatever they did. That's why we like to meet with employees and, um, you know, we always get fancy and do everything online, but we like to see the whites of their eyes because, you know, insurance is communicated in person, you really can't do that, um, online as much. We feel like.
Other, yes, sir.
I had, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield when I was employed on Robbins Air Force Base and when I retired, I carried it into retirement. Uh, they have great coverage, as you mentioned, um, we don't have any, a problem at all with preferred providers, whether it's, um, PCPs or, or pharmacies.
Right, they also have the state health contract, so state health plan is under Blue Cross, um, as well as United Healthcare, but.
Yes, sir.
Representative, I just was wondering, is, did I understand you just say this saves the city money, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
What kind of, uh, you know, in the big picture?
We were guestimating, is, is good estimate between the city, um, and the employees, it looks like about nine hundred thousand dollars. And, and when we can do that, we're like, okay, where do we sign? We don't want the carrier changing their mind.
We thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Newby, would this need a vote or is it concurrence to move forward on the recommendation? Hmm? Okay, all right, council members, we'll move that forward till tomorrow night. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank, thank you all for your time and, um, if you have any questions, please con, please feel free to contact me anytime. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for saving us some money.
Yes, sir.
Four E is the Office of City Manager. Four E one is Woodlong Cemetery Space Sales. Mr. Smith?
You all thought you were out of the cemetery game, uh, but administration is coming to you this evening, uh, with a recommendation. You may recall back in twenty twenty-two, I believe it was, um, the administration at the time came to you all uh, with some frustrations relative to our ongoing cemetery operations. Uh, I think one of the driving forces at the time behind that was, um, uh, accountability associated with the various funeral homes and the way they kinda went in and handled their business in our cemeteries. Uh, there was also some concern creeping up relative to, uh, the city, uh, possibly being in a business operation that competes directly with the private sector, like private, uh, burial areas, that sort of thing. Uh, so at the time, it was recommended to you all that, uh, our remaining lots in Woodlong, because all the evergreen lots were sold, of course, but all the remaining lots in Woodlong, if they weren't sold in a specific period of time, would shift to green space. Um, and at that time, there were two hundred and eighty-seven plots. Um, and that would take effect, I think it was July of the next year, so twenty-three. Uh, come July twenty-three, you all concur with that, obviously, come July twenty-three, there were two hundred and sixty-three lots that were shifted to green space. Um, in the meantime, the, uh, city continues to receive inquiries relative to being able to purchase plots, uh, in Woodlong Cemetery, specifically coming from, almost always, uh, family members of those interned at Woodlong. So you have plots that have been sold, you have lots, uh, family lots where you might have a mother and a father buried and now the children are coming in who, like me, you know, didn't plan ahead, uh, but now we need to, you know, procure a space. We wanna be with our family for eternity. Uh, so we, we're getting these inquiries and we were just thinking that, well, you know, these spots are sitting there, they're still available. Um, there really isn't any sort of significant benefit for the city to maintain those as green space. Um, so why not open those, uh, available spaces back up, um, and allow folks to come in and, and purchase those spaces and be buried in those spaces? Um, it's a service to the citizens, um, we would retain ten percent of those, uh, for essentially insurance purposes where mistakes have been made in the past. Um, but again, you know, we have the two cemeteries, we have the spaces available. Um, so the, uh, ability of the city to go out and be able to work with folks that wanna be buried there, um, may be a benefit to us. Uh, so the recommendation to you all would be, if you were to, to, uh, concur moving forward or approve moving forward, um, we would actually amend the fee schedule to include a price for the purchase of lots in Woodlong Cemetery. There used to be one, now there's not. Um, and the city would move forward with selling the available lots with the ten percent retainage for errors and omissions.
Questions, council members?
Yes, sir, um, does this green space, and which contains the two hundred and sixty-three lots, does that go all the way out to Woodlong Drive and Samna? Is it that entire area?
No, it's not, it's, this, these are the ones that are already plotted. It's not growing the cemetery at all. It's the ones we have already plotted out there.
That, that's correct, it was part of the cemetery and they were just transferred over to green space.
Okay, 'cause this was before I came on, um, but we own everything, that's city property, all the way out to Woodlong Drive and Samna, correct? That's city property, so if we had to, we could, we could extend it in the future, in the next seventy-five years.
If that is what everybody wants, but we, we're having a lo, a number of family members come in and it, it just seemed like common sense that if we have spaces available where your parents are buried and we're telling children, no, you can't be buried there. And so it just seems like it would be reasonable to open those back up and allow people to purchase those. I mean, you can see there's not been a great, in that year's time, we sold, what, twenty or something like that, so. And I think that the concern about maintaining the cemetery as well was, you know, it's not stopping people from being buried out there because people own plots out there, they're being buried there every week. So as far as us continuing to operate a cemetery, we are, so. So Ms. Newby, this will need a vote, I take, tomorrow night?
Well, I think Mr. Smith said not only would it vote, but we've seen that pass a resolution previously about changing the policy, but there would need to be an amendment in the future for the, um, fee.
Yes, okay.
Yes, sir, that would need to come forward.
So if we approve it tomorrow night, then the resolution can come at a later date or do, would you prefer we wait on the resolution?
I think that you would want to wait to start selling at the same time.
Yes. Hmm? Okay, so that would, we would do that in our next meeting, not the one tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. We'll move forward with bringing that resolution to you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Item five are council member items, Ms. Bynum-Grace? Mr. Jones? Mayor Proton?
No, sir.
Mr. Peterson?
No, for me.
Reverend King? Ms. Newby, do you have anything for us this evening? Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Item six are department head items, looks like Mr. Coles is the only guy remaining over there, mu- must have been a long meeting.
Yes, sir, I haven't done this.
Okay. Chief?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Chief Everidge?
Tonight, sir.
Mr. Schumet?
Uh, just an update on the garbage, uh, transfer over to Ryland. Everything's going smoothly, we're in the process of that going on on the twentieth, then taking over.
Okay.
There will be some changes on service, but we are putting out flyers and also contacting each individual resident to notify them of that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bixson or Chapman, is there anything from HR additional? Thank you for all the hard work on this. Ms. Warren, anything from the City Clerk's office? Okay, thank you. Item seven is mayor items, I just remind you that all of our meetings are open to the public and we cur, encourage your interest and participation in these meetings. Now, next meeting will be tomorrow night with our pre-council meeting at five, here in the chambers with our regular meeting starting at six. So we look forward to seeing you tomorrow night. There is no requirement for an executive session this evening, is there? Oh, I don't have any forms, so, okay. We, we are going into executive session, so for the purpose of litigation, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion and second, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. We are in executive session. Use to me, so.